Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, June 26, 7:00 PM. City Council Chambers and City Hall for the study session for the City Council. I'll call the meeting into order and entertain the roll call, please.
Here I am.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Thank you. Item C is pledge allegiance, if you'll join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Section D is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any. Haring none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Welcome back our guest councilperson for the month, Mr. Letty. Welcome back. Brings us to section E, public comments for items not on the agenda. Please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Are there any public comments this evening from anyone? See, nobody rise. We'll move forward with section F, the study session calendar. Item one is the Waverly Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Quarterly Report to the Council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, city staff. Thank you for having us again. My name is Travis Tolliver. I'm the Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce Main Street Program, and thank you for having us to give you an update on our organization. I'm just going to be up here doing a real quick read-through of the dashboard that I have sent you, and then we'll go ahead and move on to Kristin Vell, our Board Chair. We'll say a few words as well. You can see the numbers here. Volunteerism total values increased to thirteen to five. It will obviously increase as we go throughout the year. Fourteen new businesses, two hundred retained businesses, and twenty-eight chamber champions, twenty-five engaged business visits. I added a new thing that we're starting to track at the chamber offices. People coming in asking for visitors' information, business resources, or other, and other can be anything. We have people come from out of town asking where their grandparents are buried, and so we're obliged to help them. So we've started tracking those for you, and you'll see those on these updates as we continue. But thought it'd be nice for you to know how your visitor's center is being utilized that way. Just to recap, a couple of quick events from the previous quarter. Of course, our annual war celebration that happened at the end of March, that was a great turnout for that event, and thank you to those of you who did come to that. Our winners for our large business award was Nestle. The small business award was Thompson Shoes. The nonprofit award is the Waverly Health Center Foundation. Don Meyer received our community service award, and Dan McKenzie received the lifetime achievement award. So all wonderful winners, and great to recognize those businesses and people in our community. Also want to point out the streetscape planters through our design beautification committee members and city staff partnering together to help make our downtown planters look so beautiful. So thank you very much, city staff, for helping that out. We have many retail events had gone on and are will be going on, for sure. Also want to point out, what was one last thing? Concerts in Coleman obviously has started, so at the beginning of June, we do that in conjunction with both the city and the municipal band every Thursday night over the park. We'd love to see you there if you have a chance to grab your lawn chair and join us in those times. And then, quarter two, learn over lunch. It was a great turnout. We do this in partnership with the Waverly Rotary Club, and our guest speaker is Robert Frederick from U&amp;I talking about the future of work. It was a fantastic presentation. If you didn't get a chance to see it, the presentation's actually up on our website. Feel free to take a look at those slides. Some very interesting data and stats with regards to the future of work, the future of workforce. I know Bill was there and found it very enjoyable as well. I think the commission, the Economic Development Commission, is going to be hearing from him soon, correct, in July? So there's that. Second page, just taking a look at our organization's strategic goals right now. Still, obviously, a lot of things in progress and ongoing. I know that Dan McKenzie is still meeting with folks to make up that Bremer Bridge Task Force, and things are starting to move progressively there as well. So there's not much change on that side of the page. Any questions about the dashboard that I can answer for you at this time?
On the visitor information and business inquiries, is that from the beginning of the year, or is that at a point where you started tracking?
That's at the point where we started tracking. We did that starting in April, and that's tracked through all the way up to last week. Yeah. All right. If there's nothing more, then I'll ask Kristin Vell to come up and join you and speak a little bit more on our organization.
And just to touch a little bit further on that tracking, that was a conversation that we had as an executive committee and just through many conversations with all of you and other folks in the community, really wanting to make sure that we're doing a better job of telling our story and what the value of our organization is. And that was one of those things that, you know, just happens, right? So an idea that we came up with to have internal staff really start tracking those calls and emails and all those things that are coming into the office, just to provide a little bit more value there. So, since we were talking about it. So, thanks Travis for giving us that update. As you know, we'll continue to do that, and if there's anything in the meantime between these quarterly updates, I think you guys are all aware that both Travis and myself, other people in the executive committee are happy to answer any questions. So through the other conversations that we've had with many of you, and as I indicated at our quarter one update, we're also going to plan to provide a highlight based on each of the program's core functions, chamber, Main Street, and tourism. So the highlights that I provide tonight are not exclusive to our organization, yet we really do find them mutually beneficial to Waverly. So the chamber function that I'll be highlighting this evening is Project Lead. We're really excited about bringing back this professional development series, which is designed to foster community awareness while developing individual leadership skills. Sessions will meet once per month, starting in September, and those will go all the way through May. Applications are currently available on our website, and so we're really gearing up for a successful 2024 graduating class. Later, I'll introduce you to a 2022 Project Lead graduate, but he's going to share a little bit more about his experience with the program. I'm sure many of you are very familiar with the beautiful flowers that we have downtown, but in midway, mid-May, we had nine volunteers from our design committee, Whopper College and the Garden Club, as well as staff from the city and the chamber planted nearly five hundred flowers throughout the community. So thanks to the city's efforts and continuing to water those and keeping those vibrant, the flowers are thriving and they make our city look beautiful. So that's also an important function of our Main Street community. For a tourism function, the popular concerts in Coleman series is well underway. Hopefully, a few of you have been able to get out to some of those. Those are lots of fun. If you're not familiar with the concert series, the Greater Waverly Municipal Band, along with other local entertainment, comes out on Thursdays in both June and July. So we've had a really strong start to the season. We've been seeing about four hundred attendees for those events each week. So there are still four concerts left in the season if anybody would like to come join. We had Kids Night last week, which was a raving success, bouncy houses, and a magician and all the fun stuff. So the kids really like that, as long as, you know, other families and whatnot. So I would now like to introduce you to Brian Walker. Brian is a Waverly resident and a 2022 graduate of Project Lead, so I'm excited for him to share a little bit more about his experience with that program.
My name is Brian Walker. And Kristin talked about Project Lead wonderfully. I was in that class, and up to that point, I have been a resident of Waverly for about three years. And I was asked to come to Project Lead because, yes, it's a leadership class, but also it focuses on Waverly as a community, and that's what was important to me. I got to see a lot of the businesses that were in town that I didn't even know existed. I got to go and tour facilities that are important to Waverly. I got to tour City Hall. I got to tour the police station without getting in trouble. I got to go to the fire department, and I got to network a lot while I was in Project Lead. The Exchange Club came and talked to us. I'm now a member of the Exchange Club. I think Project Lead is so wonderful, and it's done so much to me for a development for just me as a Waverlyite. I don't know if that's the correct term, but we'll go with it, as well as kind of as a person in business. I got to network both in Project Lead, talking to local businesses, but also with the Exchange Club. I'm coming back, and I'm helping to organize the next class. I've seen a lot of faces in here. Sarah has just come, well, I went to her, but she is graciously going to give us some time for our first session. And you came and talked to us about mental health, and James, you came and talked to us about the city. It's, I mean, I can't tell you how much the class has really meant to me. I've actually, through the Exchange Club, I have made contacts, and now they're coming back to my business, and we are making connections that way. So as, you know, learning about Waverly and learning about business, it's just been, it's been a wonderful experience. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions we can answer at this time?
I don't really have a question. I've got a comment. I think that your fiscal year ends on June 30th, and you'll have new officers there. When do new officers?
December 31st.
September, okay. That's why I thought this is your last one. Okay. I apologize for that. All right. Well, we could hear you one more time. Fantastic. Thank you. Two more times. You know, I've struggled for a long time just focusing in on just what it is that the chamber actually does. And I've had discussions, I had discussions with Kristin, I've had discussions with Travis, and we've had discussions with your board, and I'm still struggling with what focus it is that the chamber has. And I looked at your mission statement and your vision statement, and, you know, it appears to me that it's focused quite broadly on public relations kind of activities, perhaps. I mean, this is a long introduction, and I'm not going to stretch this out anymore. You know, my suggestion, having worked through mission statements and vision statements up the yin yang in business and different charitable organizations that I've belonged to, seems like every time you have a turnover of new officers, you do, you take a look at the vision and the mission statement again. But they really are important things, and, you know, my recommendation would be, and here again, this is just my recommendation, obviously, I can't tell you guys what to do, but, you know, I think I would take a hard look at what your mission statement is and what your vision statement is, and try to sharpen those up, make them much more, much more direct, much, not as broad as they are now, you know. The vision statement you have is champion and amplify the unique qualities of Waverly. Yes, but, how do you do that? You know? What is it?
Well, I think if you were to look at our strategic plan again, we really do go through each of our goals and how we're going to get there.
Which I did.
And, you know, we took a lot of time last year in working on that, and I feel like we did set us up for not just a year, not just two years, but a little bit longer term, because it is, we do have some turnover, some turnover. Even with that turnover, we have to have consistency, right? So it's hard to get super narrow and super focused in that. But I hope that, you know, some of the storytelling that we're doing, I'm hopeful that some of you are beginning to see a little bit more of the value that the chamber does bring to the community, and the events that we put on, and all of the things that we do together with the city to make Waverly what it is.
Yeah.
I'll also add, too, that when we did the strategic plan last year, the board made a very conscious effort to make sure that it fell in line with the mission statement, and the vision statement was actually changed as a result of the strategic plan. And so every year, those two statements get reevaluated. To your point of being focused and broad, I can understand that and appreciate that. At the same time, there's so much that this organization does, that to narrow it down in a mission statement, I mean, you'd be listing out so many different things, it would be too long. So a statement almost has to be somewhat broadish in order to be able to cover the ground that we cover.
Yeah.
But it doesn't hurt to be reminded to take a look at that and make sure that what we're doing falls in line with our mission.
Sure. And that's really what I'm asking. I mean, every time that I've worked in an organization and a new consultant has come in, the first thing they do is trash your mission statement, your mission statement. These are the worst things I have ever seen. We need to redo them. So, and I'm not trying to do that, because I know you guys have worked really hard on all of these things, but, you know, I do think that they do need to be reevaluated and say, okay, is this really saying what it is? Not, we've had time to look, you know, through this, we've worked with this for a period of time, looked at how our strategic plan has come to fruition, you know, what kinds of things we've been able to do, what kinds of things haven't worked so well. Maybe it's time, and truthfully, I think, you know, every year, you really should be reassessing that mission statement and that vision statement.
And that's fair. We aren't sitting that plan on a shelf and letting it sit for five years. We go through that at least quarterly at our meetings and with our committees. Our committees are supposed to be going through that monthly with their committees themselves. So, I mean, it's not something that's just sitting there and done. But, yes.
I would comment also that when you were going through that strategic planning process last year, I was impressed with the effort that I was seeing take place, and impressed with the product that I saw coming out of that, but I found myself thinking, okay, what happens after they're done with this? And honestly, in every single month's meeting, each committee report that is given is geared specifically toward the strategic plan that was directed at that particular committee, and they speak very directly to whatever the objectives were that were identified in that strategic plan for their committee. And I've been impressed with that, because, quite honestly, I think too often we see organizations that go through that process and then it does get put on the shelf. But I really do feel like they're sticking to it, and they're trying really hard to have that be a guiding document for them.
The actual document lives on a Google Drive, where committee chairs and committee members can review it, but also can edit it, because we feel like it's a living, breathing document. So as circumstances or things change, perhaps a committee's focus needs to change a little bit, and that can be done, you know, pretty much right there. And so we are oftentimes led by our board chairs to review the document to make sure that it's falling in line with what all of our committees are doing. So, yeah, I'm glad that's evident.
Yeah, I found the, I think it's helpful to bring people to tell their story of how the chamber has directly impacted them. I have a couple of questions. How are the, how are, were Project Lead recruited?
Great question. So Brian told me just the other day, he sent off, what is it, two hundred and thirty?
Two hundred and thirty-two individual emails.
Two hundred and thirty-two individual emails. But, you know, obviously, we're promoting through our website and our social media channels and our e-newsletters. All the, Brian's a part of a steering committee that has been working hard to promote Project Lead, and that's how we're trying to generate promotion for it.
So you send it out to, like, local businesses?
Oh, yeah.
And say, do you have people who'd be great candidates?
Absolutely. Yeah. And it comes down to those touchpoints, too, right? And so the committee has a list of all of our businesses, and they're just going through and making those touchpoints. Yeah, absolutely.
My other question is, what kind of preparations are in the works for the Bremer Avenue Bridge closure?
So I don't have any details on that yet. Dan McKenzie, I believe, was going to be setting up a meeting here very soon with some more participants of a task force that he's putting together to really kind of drum up ideas, some ideas that have come from past meetings, though, that he's shared with me are things like making sure that there's enough wayfinding signage. We know that the DOT only provides so much. If there's more that we can provide, taking a look at that. The mayor himself actually suggested vermicape signs, which I thought was kind of a cute gesture. We might be taking a look at things like that, marketing the downtown in different ways, and then events that we can be putting on during that time, and especially, obviously, during the warmer months. Maybe having a gallery area in Coleman Park where people can sit on bleachers, or kids can sit in a certain area and watch the construction happen. Just different things like that that can make the events a little bit more enjoyable slash tolerable versus just hating it and driving around it.
Yeah, it'd be great to capitalize on the fact that the road will be closed, you know, like we did for John L. of the Road, and just use that space.
Yeah, there's like some farm-to-table dinners that we're thinking about and different things like that, so more to come, for sure.
I know, we've talked to the board and have sent some names to Dan, too, and I know he was, summer's busy for everybody, but I know he was planning to get all of those folks together. We requested each, one person from each of our committees sit on that task force, whatever term we'll call it, task force. I know he was reaching out to folks at the city, too, to make sure there was some representation from the city as well. So, yeah, we should be hopefully seeing some movement there in the city in the future.
Yeah, I'd be really interested, over the next couple of years, to take a hard look at economic development in Waverly, and what are the roles of chamber, Main Street, the city, the Economic Development Commission? Because I just think, especially for our commission, I really would like them to be more instigators and more idea generators, and to provide support to things that we, as a council, want to put into play. The Irving School site is a prime example of that. But I'd love to see us really look at how can we reorganize economic involvement and figure out how everybody could have their role, and not have redundancy and have it much more clear for people who want to start businesses or the people who need help.
I think we would welcome that, and you would want to be a part of that conversation. I know our incoming chair, Bob Beckingham, has been pretty instrumental in some of those conversations as well, and supplement the economic development task force, so I know he has some interest in that, and I think that he will be a great fit to kind of run with that because of representing the chamber, too.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Brings this up to item number two on the study session calendar is the Waverly Public Library Annual Report to the City Council. Evening.
Good evening. I have with me tonight Deanna McHugh, who is on our library board. I also have Elaine Main and Erin Jones in the audience, also board members. So what I thought I would do is step through just a few quick updates from the summer. We're midway through our summer reading programs right now, which is a busy time of year, exciting time of year for us. And then I'm going to turn it over to Deanna to give the update for our capital campaign. So, like I said, we're halfway through the summer reading program. I left you each a pamphlet for the adult program, in case there's any that you're interested in seeing. We have a separate program for the teens and one for the children, and it's a diversity theme this year. This is something that's, throughout the United States altogether now, is the theme for public library summer reading programs. And so we've been taking a trip to a different continent each week. So the first week was Europe, second week was Asia, third week was South America last week, and this week, we are in Africa. So we try to, especially on our Wednesday programs, try to bring in speakers that know about those areas, and we've been working with a And we've been working with, uh, um, there, um, from those areas, there's a, there's a nonprofit organization called Culture Allure from Des Moines, who we've been working with to send, um, representatives from different countries in those areas to speak to kids and to teach them a new, um, skill or a song or some new information about that area of the world. Um, you can go to the next one. Oh, the passport. So the passport, um, for, this is for the kids. They actually have a passport book and when they, um, when they go to an activity or reach a reading goal, they get a stamp in that continent area for that, for that week. So, so far, the numbers, and these are just the online registrations. I, I know that that doesn't represent all of them because we've given away almost 500 passports. Um, but we've had 41 babies signed up, um, 309 children up to fifth grade, 104 teens and 162 adults, um, signed up. So a lot of interest. That's, that's, um, very similar numbers to the past year. I wanted to show you, um, one of our programs that we do throughout the year is called Sensory Time. But I think this one's, um, really neat. Right now you can see that we set up in the patio area, that north patio that we're keeping, um, on the northwest side, we use for programming like this. And basically the sensory time is for the littlest ones. And they, the, we have different kiddie pools set up out there full of things that parents probably wouldn't want to clean up at home. So we set it up for the kids to play with under parental supervision out there. And, um, then we do all the cleanup afterwards with our big tarp. But sometimes it might be water with, um, floaty letters, um, and numbers in the water or other things that they can fish out. It might be sand, it might be seed corn or beans or something like that. But different things for them to touch and experience. Um, so that's sensory time. Then, uh, we've added a program this summer, Storytime at the Farmer's Market, and that has been going really well. I think even last Saturday, when the weather was a little bit iffy, they still had a good crowd, um, of folks. And we had a, a local author read her book and talk to the kids. Um, the next two slides, next three slides actually are, um, Storytime from the parks, which once we get our bookmobile, we hope to actually bring the bookmobile on these as well. But I wanted to show you the number of people that are showing out for these, these events. It's been 120, 130 people at each park. And kudos to Garrett's crew for getting the parks, um, having the parks mowed ahead of, um, time so they're in prime condition for these, these events. But there's just a lot of interest out there. Yep, their last one there is at Willow Lawn Park, kind of a panoramic. So, um, this is a picture from our first week of the, our Continental Festival for Europe. And so we brought in a court, an accordion player, the kids got to make lefso, um, and we had some, um, cooperative skiing simulation going on there. Um, the next one is, uh, was for Asia, the continent of Asia. There was a man from the Ukraine area who brought, um, hats from around the world, hats from that area of the world. And then last week, we had, um, a woman come who was, who did Latin American dances and showed the kids how to do that and they actually got to do that. So there are a lot of other, um, a lot of other speakers, but that's just some examples of some of the things the kids got to experience. Um, there's also been a family program this year, um, Art in the, Art in the Gardens. So the first week, um, since we were studying Europe, they had Monet as their guide and they went out to the gardens and, um, could draw inspiration out there and do their painting. Um, we also had art for adults class. Um, we've just, over the years, we've seen a lot of interest from adults as we've been doing these programs. And that's really where that grew out of was an interest. Our primary purpose in doing the summer reading program has always been to fill that summer reading gap so that the kids who are learning to read, um, continue their reading over the summer and really don't lose ground, you know, as the summer goes on. Um, but adults have shown so much interest in it too, just the book clubs and, um, the other programs that we've done. Another one is the puzzle competition, which is really popular. Um, I understand there's groups, um, family groups, friend groups that go, that travel, like to different states to participate in puzzle competitions. So we've got some really, really good groups there. So that's kind of a picture of the summer reading program as it stands right now. We've got three weeks left. Um, I did want to put one slide in here quick to show you a picture. This is how the bookmobile will actually look. This is the wrap that we've worked with the company, um, graphic designers on. So it says, uh, Waverly Public Library Bookmobile, Bringing the Library to You. Um, we decided just to call it what it is because I think people understand that, even though we all know it's not just books. Um, but we're very excited about that. Right now, the status of the bookmobile is that, um, they, they haven't received a 360 camera that is to be, um, installed at the factory. So they're waiting on that, probably the end of this week. Then it needs to be inspected and then delivered when we can schedule the training for our staff because there's about six hours of training when they come as well. And then we need, um, time to get the, the title set up and get it loaded and make a plan. So, um, we're looking at September for sure as the time where we would roll out to the different neighborhoods. So with that, I will turn it over to Deanna McHugh.
Thank you so much, Sarah. And, uh, again, just to reintroduce myself, I'm Deanna McHugh and I'm the current president of the Library Foundation. And I also serve on the library board with some of the folks that are, are here today. And, uh, lots of excitement going on at the library with the summer programs. But of course, another big part of the excitement these days is our building campaign. And so I wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update of where things are at with that right now. Um, just to remind, uh, folks of our original vision, if you want to click to that, Sarah, um, our, our goal was really to renew this much-loved community library space so that it's been there for 25 years and it can be ready to serve the community for the next 25 and beyond. Um, when we started the project, we really had four goal kind of focus areas. And a reminder of what those four are. For children, it was really about expanding the space. You saw the programming that's going on, um, for kids and how busy that can be. It's really adding some more space within the library and then creating that really unique, um, story tree that we'll be able to gather around on amphitheater seating and really make that a focal point, a one-of-a-kind focal point for the library. For teens, it's about giving them some more space. They've got a little, little corner right now that they kind of call their own. This will be expanding and enclosing that south patio so that that becomes a teen tech and youth lounge so that it's got more computer space for gaming, space for socializing, doing homework, gathering with friends. Really gives them a place of their own. Uh, then for adults, they were saying their most important need was a little bit more quiet space when things get really busy in the library. So renovating the northwest, um, kind of conference room area into an adult fireside den, we're calling it, where it's a really cozy reading and relaxation space. But regardless, for everyone in the community, our goal is really to renovate the entire interior, make it more accessible, more seating, more places to, to read and get together and really enjoy the library. Upgrades to meeting rooms, more computers, you name it, a complete update to the entire facility. So those were kind of the original goals. And just kind of clicking through here, there's that floor plan that we've got the expanded, um, children's area with the story tree. Back in the upper-left corner is the teen space, the enclosure of that patio. In the opposite side is the renovation for the adult, um, fireside den space. And then all the rest, um, a complete update and kind of upgrade to the shelving and the seating and the finishes and furnishings. So now we'll take, if you escape out and bring up that, um, video, this is a little swoop-down tour. This quick video that the architects put together is on the campaign website. And it'll really move fast through the, uh, through the building here. So hang on to your seat if you get woozy, get motion sickness, you might get, uh, going here. But we're coming in through the main door and then there over to the left, more seating and tables. And you can see that story tree with the amphitheater seating so kids can gather under the tree to listen to stories and presenters. And now we're zooming in, um, and heading over the top of the children's area, more play space, a baby play zone, um, and then taking a quick look down into the teen space, the gaming, uh, tech side and the social lounge space. Going along the west, uh, and headed towards the north, more computer, um, access there. Updated service desks. You can see the fire is burning in the fireside lounge. Uh, and then down, we're heading back now towards the circulation desk. And all of those service desks will also be redone to kind of make them smaller footprint and give us more public space. So it'll really be a nice, complete renovation. If we want to switch back, um, and remind everybody of the original costs that we talked about when we came here before the council, uh, last year, we were looking at, um, cost estimates where for reshaping the new spaces for the children, teens and adults, that was 920,000. All the rest of the renovation of the interior, 950. Some work to, uh, improve some paint on the exterior and upgrade the access to the drive-up window was another 80. And then all the architect fees, admin costs and construction contingencies for 450. So 2.4 million was the estimate for the overall project. And right now we have the architects looking to see, you know, how well did we estimate? Are we going to need to, to look at any additional costs based on construction, uh, costs as they are today? So we'll have a little bit more information there. But we, we certainly tried to add a lot of construction contingency into that original plan from the get-go. Um, we had some original targets for where that money was gonna come from. And we had some great early success in our fundraising. So we've revised these just a little bit from what you saw before. But, uh, again, starting with the, the wonderful support we received from the council for our targeted 700,000. And then we were looking at now about 800,000 in those major gifts, kind of the silent phase, if you will, of fundraising, uh, to get another 800,000 from that. 200,000 then from the, the smaller grassroots type of broad public fundraising. Uh, 500,000 from past gifts that were given to the library in years, years back that are held in the foundation, being able to put some of those to work. And then another 200,000 coming from grants. So if we flip to the next, oh, and then as Sarah said, that bookmobile was completely funded by a generous gift from the Wayne and Nancy Anderson estate. And so we didn't have to look for any additional donations for that. The foundation dollars were put towards that bookmobile. And some of those dollars, again, we're gonna look to support this project with. So, um, here's where we're at. Thanks again to your wonderful support, um, from the city for that 700,000 that we had the vote on earlier. The county has also looked to provide 25,000 towards the project. Our target was 800,000 for lead gifts and we're just a little over that right now at 807. Um, our grassroots is really what's been getting going in the last month or so. Uh, 200,000 is the goal and we're at 75 roughly for public. Grants, uh, 200,000 the goal and we're at 188 so far. And we have some that we're still planning to, to apply for. And then the 500, uh, from the foundation that we talked about. So of the 2.4 million, we're just about at 2.3 right now, which, you know, is, is truly overwhelming and, and inspiring to see the community support the project in that way. Now that said, that's still drawing from the foundation. So if we end up raising all we're looking for in grassroots and additional grants and beyond, you know, that just means there's dollars we can preserve in the foundation for what might come down, you know, in the future, down the road. So we're certainly going to continue to work and see that we can get as much community support as possible because at this stage of the game, every dollar is important and will go towards helping the library. Um, as far as grassroots goes, we kicked off here a little over a month ago with an open house. We had a little mini golf in the stacks. Um, and there's some photos of people trying their golfing prowess in amongst the book, bookshelves. Um, and that really got us kicked off, gave people some information about how the project was gonna impact the inside of the, of the building and answer some of their questions. So we've been working now on grassroots activities and starting to really get going on firming up the timeline. And this is the rough timeline we talked about before. Right now we're really working, some of these folks are working very closely with the architects and thinking through the design, trying to get that work, um, to really firm up here in the next few weeks. We did put the bid out, uh, for the story tree, the artist fabrication of that. And I think those bids have to be back by the end of this week. Um, then we'll interview the applicants and hope to award that. I think the public hearing for the story tree itself is August 7th, if I remember right. And then we'll be back to award the contract and, and have more discussions on that particular piece of it. Right now the architects are looking, I think, um, having the construction documents completed near the end of August so that in September, we could start that bidding process for the construction effort itself. And again, some of this will likely get adjusted a little bit as we continue to work with the architects. But end of October for, um, awarding that contract and getting going so that right there at the beginning of, end of October, beginning of November, construction could begin. And that should really work well with, with construction firms that are, you know, working on schools and things during the summer months. Now, a bulk of this project will be inside, so they'll be able to do that over the winter months. And then hopefully, fingers crossed, ready to go, um, for the busy summer reading program season in 2024. So that's the, still the timeline that we're hoping, hoping to do. Um, in terms of options to help, as we said, there are always opportunities to, to give, stop in and make a pledge, volunteer. We're gonna ultimately probably need not only volunteers to help us as we continue the grassroots work, but volunteers perhaps to help us figure out how to relocate parts of the library as we're doing construction and then move everything back in when we're ready to unveil the, the new space. Um, lots of ways to give. Gifts can be made to the founder. Um, lots of ways to give. Gifts can be made to the foundation. We're a separate organization, but our sole mission is support of the library and its mission. So, we're there to help, um, the library invest and manage the gifts that it receives. Uh, the ways to give, there's always options on the website or ways to stop in to the library and pick up a form or, or make a gift right there at the library. One, in terms of things to, ways to help out, this afternoon, if you were at the library, some kids went, "Hey, we want to help. Let's bake cookies and sell them at the front door as a fundraiser." So, we had a true grassroots effort going as they were offering lemonade and cookies and a free will donation for, for the project. And I understand they did pretty darn well. So... Um, that's kind of the, the gift process. Again, everyone's support is important at this point. Every nickel, every dollar is going to help us get to that goal. And I truly want to thank the council by providing your early support and getting the message out there. That really kicked us off in a tremendous way. And I can't thank you enough for your consideration and thoughtful questions through that process and ultimately the, the support that got us going. So, we couldn't do it without you. Um, we appreciate everyone's assistance, and we'll be back to talk contracts and, and timeline for opening and all of that here in the coming months. Uh, I guess with that, I'll open it up for any additional questions and remind people, the website is Make Room for Renewal. Not only is there a place to donate online, you can get lots of information about the planned renewal project, that video you flew over the library with, um, and also some awesome, uh, stories of people and the impact that the library has had on them and how much the library means to them and how they support the project. There's just some truly wonderful community stories that are out there. Uh, any other questions that I can answer? Sarah can answer?
Anything from anyone?
I guess I have a question about this. Is this a library project? That's something different. Okay.
Yeah, if you want to just flip to the very last couple of slides, there's that, um, picture that Sarah showed. You know, it shows just how popular these programs are and I think reinforces for all of us, how the extra space can, can immediately be put to use. Kids in a recent summer program. And then this last one was just posted, if you follow Facebook for the library. This was a letter that the library received, um, thanking the library for some of their, uh, different books and things that this young patron was excited about. But if you click there, Sarah, it hones in on the line that I particularly loved. "I love the library. My happy place that you created." I mean, that's what the project is all about. And if you read the bottom there, if you've got a chance to look at it, he's actually giving some suggestions for how we can renew the library and have more space for board games. So, every idea will be taken into the plans. So... Thanks again for your time. Any final questions or comments? All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. Brings us to Section H. Item one is the Waverly Golf Commission minutes of April 11th, 2023, received into the record. Mr. Brown, are we having staff updates this evening?
We have some brief updates tonight, sir.
Uh, just a quick reminder that we have the Cedar Falls Waterloo something in on this coming Sunday. Uh, they'll be doing an Independence Day show over at Coleman Park, the amphitheater, begins at 7:00 PM. If you get a chance, go out and check it out.
And then you'll notice, as Anne was saying, there's some pictures in front of you. Um, the Human Equity and Diversity Commission last week celebrated Juneteenth by, um, we did a little scavenger hunt in town. The pictures that you see of the four, can't, there was five candidates, but you could only see four in this picture. But our own James, Officer James Johnson was one of the candidates. Um, we had where if you go, if the child went to one of the displays, there's two letters on each of the posters. And so, then it would be all scrambled up. And then Saturday at the farmer's market, they would turn that in as to what the word was on Scrambled, which it was Juneteenth. Um, so we had some entries from that. And then we also had about 20 more children that showed up at the farmer's market. And we had a quick little, uh, we took these posters to the farmer's market, and we had a quick little scavenger hunt for that as well. So, um, it was a pretty successful. And as I always, when you have something for the first time, you find things that you need to change for the next. But overall, it was pretty fun and exciting. So, something different. We do plan on doing it again next year. So...
I think that's all we have tonight, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Throws us into City Council comments. Mr. Myers. Mr. Bergen.
Um, so last week, I was at a conference, which is why I wasn't here. And, uh, it was a conference on, uh, risk analysis, risk assessment analysis. And one of the things that I was exposed to was something called the National Risk Index Map. And this is something put out by FEMA, and you can Google it, and you can kind of explore all the information about the different counties. But I was really impressed looking at Braimer County, kind of where Waverly is. Um, we have what's called the Social Vulnerability Index. So, this is for every county. It's ranked like on a score of 0 to 100, 100 being the most socially vulnerable. And our score is 4.23 out of 100. So, that's exceedingly low in terms of social vulnerability. Um, there's also the Community Resilience, uh, ranking. Again, this is a score from 0 to 100, and our score there is 99.2. So, that says that our county is not very vulnerable and is very resilient. So, this is kind of measurements. And I think when we think back to the floods of 2008, we can really see how our community was very resilient and able to respond. Um, so it's kind of nice to see the numbers representing what we're perceiving. So, um, I would encourage any of you who are curious to go and look at that, that map, the National Risk Index Map that's put out by FEMA. And as usual, anyone who wants to discuss city council business with me, feel free to join me at the Braimer Avenue Brewery after city council.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Mr. Drankow.
I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Ms. Rothy.
I'm just going to put a plug in for Heritage Days is coming up in a few weeks. They are looking for volunteers. Um, so if you like to ID people to make sure they are not drinking underage or you want to sell beer tickets or help with bingo on their website, Facebook page, there are links to sign up to volunteer. So, they need help. But it's, the plans are well underway and things look good. Um, hope for good weather. That's it.
Excellent. Our guest councilperson, won't forget them this week. So, did you enjoy your time? Good deal. Excellent to hear, and we anticipate seeing some more of your colleagues hopefully in the, in the future of the city council, guest council program. So, thank you. Mr. Kangas.
Uh, just would like to remind people we're coming up on the 4th of July. And enjoy your fireworks. Obey the city ordinances on them, please.
And I'll carry forward the, the message there. Just a reminder of the days and times, the 3rd and the 5th from noon to 10:00 PM, and the 4th from noon to 11:00 PM are the appropriate days and times to do so. Uh, piggybacking off what Mr. Bergen, uh, was talking about as far as resiliency and some of the factors that they, they weigh in on that, uh, one of them you probably remember hearing is critical infrastructure. And back in 2010, 2011, traveled to Chicago to be a guinea pig in evaluating, um, what's important for a community or a county to have and, and ranking what's more valuable, an ambulance or a fire truck, and kind of ranking, uh, different things. So, interesting tie to how many years forward and how that's being used. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Kangas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same time. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.